Meeting to order. We are being filmed by Norton Cable. If anyone else is filming or taping, we need to be aware of that. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, sorry. Board of Selectmen.
Okay. I call this the Building Committee meeting to order. Our record will show that four members are present. This still I through ten, but for another lovely meeting in some volleyball game.
Playoff game.
We're talking about playoff game.
And fifty minutes is under way at the Town Manager's Congress. Probably the Norton Finance Committee meeting to order. I believe all the one member is here and present.
Can we start with the pledge? My call to municipal building committee to order. All members are present. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his own liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we'll start with the building committee, please.
Good evening. The building committee has just met at the town hall to discuss the recent events concerning the Norton project. We have several thoughts that we would like to share with the committees involved who will make the decisions as we go forward. We had questions which Chris Carmichael, the building inspector, answered for us concerning this site, and if you would like, he's here to share his thoughts with you. We had discussions about going into the future. It's the consensus of the committee that our sole goal has been and will continue to be making sure that we have a new town hall in Plymouth and a new council on Agent Norton. I'm sorry.
Norton.
I've been thinking back. Anyway, so that's.
I still live in Plymouth.
Where am I? Okay, I'm in Norton. In Norton, that's been our charge from the beginning, and it's our sole goal, and we're here to work with the town fathers and every finance committee and everybody else moving forward to achieve that goal. I think we've laid out in previous meetings the needs for the building. I don't think we need to repeat that here unless everybody has a death wish to stay till midnight. I know there has been a lot of discussion this week about the site, the condition of the site that we had initially brought forward. As I said, Mr. Carmichael is here if anybody wants to hear. The consensus we heard at our meeting is that the site will be cleaned up, maybe not to our timeline until to the extent that we would want. Does anybody want to hear what Chris has to say?
I think I don't know what. I just knew you guys asked for a meeting, so I wasn't sure why, so I think it would be helpful if we knew what's kind of transpired in the last year or so.
Yes, Kevin. Kevin will speak.
So, the building committee, right from the beginning for the past year and a half, was told that the EPA and the DEP would completely clean up the site, and then when it was clean, it would be turned over to the project. And then we would do the demolition and remove the existing building, and then with a clean site, move forward with the project. So, the turnover, transition of the actual site was going to basically be made through the selectmen, town manager and the selectmen, and with it completely clean once it was tendered over to the project, to the building project. So, we had very little input as to the site itself, actually, the entire process. All of the sites that were given to be evaluated as part of the feasibility study were provided to us by the town manager and the board of selectmen. So, we just recently learned about a week ago.
Kevin, can I ask you a quick question? How many sites were provided to you?
There were.
Five.
There were some independent sites, smaller ones that only could hold one building or the other, and then there were two that could house both buildings on one site.
So, three independent, two.
Just that were five all total.
So, that the site, not selection, but the availability of sites to be evaluated was provided to us. We didn't do the site search ourselves. Our architects did the feasibility on if, you know, certain sites would meet the needs of the project, but the tendering of what sites to study was provided by the town manager. So, we just learned about a week ago, actually with a long weekend, you know, maybe even a few days ago, that the EPA and the DEP were not planning to, potentially not planning to completely clean the site up to what our expectations were. So, with that information, we tried to dig into it more through some emails, and we have seen reports by the independent consultants at the town meeting, approved at the last town meeting, CEC is their abbreviation. And based on the reports and the attachments that we had time to review over the past few days, and their general dialogue on, you know, the funding required to completely clean up the site and the timeline and such, we don't really feel comfortable moving forward not knowing more about the suitability of the site to be completely clean. And, you know, there was one statement that stood out to me that clearly indicated that the DEP and the EPA, that their intent was not to completely clean up the site prior to turn it over to the building committee. So, with that information, I'll turn it back over to Diana, but we took a vote on whether we feel comfortable moving forward at this time, and I'll let you report on that.
Can I just, can I interrupt one second? So, I guess, so you just, you said you found out a couple of days ago this information. So, the plan was that this would be all taken care of and covered, not by the town, correct? We weren't going to be.
Our, our understanding as a committee is that we would be presented with a completely clean site.
Right, okay.
We do have money within the budget to raise the buildings at forty-seven Elm Street. But as for the town presenting us with a completely clean site, I think Chris Carmichael is much better able to answer that.
I was gonna say, yeah, it might not be you guys that.
Yeah, so, Chris, do you mind? May I?
I guess I'm just wondering when, what, we just learned about this, and how did we learn about this a couple of days ago?
This is an ongoing process. Again, my name is Chris Carmichael, I'm the building commissioner. I've been working on this site for fourteen months. I'll work the job again. So, again, I've been working with DEP, EPA, EPA for fourteen months now, and the evaluation's been ongoing, and it's evolving as we speak. Last fall, the EPA was on the bank on the Lagoon site cleaning up the contaminants found within that from testing from a couple of years ago. Mr. Zonk can speak more on that. That was prior to my arrival. And then the final processes of cleaning up the bank, they found oil leaching from an underground tank, and then that's only been found within the last couple of months. So, that's changed or evolved the project differently. Last fall, I condemned those buildings because they were an imminent threat to public safety. I reiterated that statement a couple of days ago in a letter that the town manager. The buildings along Cross Street, which are right on the road, the roofs have fallen in, and those walls are no longer held together by any maintenance system. Those walls are gonna come down on Cross Street. So, I've just found this, you know, and because I've been going out with the demolition contractors over the last few weeks to get prices for the take down, I can see what a rapid state of decline these buildings have come to. So, I reiterated the fact, and I mandated that these buildings be taken down a lot faster than we had hoped to. We were doing it judiciously with the EPA and the DEP saying, playing a chess match, saying, no, you take it down, you pay for it, and they have been. So, we haven't spent any monies for the take down to date, but I believe as Diana mentioned a few minutes ago, there was money in your budget to take these structures down.
Yes.
Okay, so that was part of the, that was part of the consideration from a walk for a walk to take down.
And what does it cost to take, what's it gonna cost to take?
I'm in the process, so the last three weeks, I've been out there, I've gotten, I've been there with three different site contractors, through CEC, I have, and I'm still in the process of receiving those bids, so I have not received them all yet.
Mike, my understanding is to take them down, we'll have to do asbestos abatement, and that's gonna be 1.2 million.
Again, the DEP has money in the fund that was taken from bankruptcy, from the 2015 bankruptcy. There was so much money put aside for this transite siding and anything within imminent threat of release to the public. So, they're not gonna touch anything inside the building. ESM was out there last fall working through the DEP to do samplings throughout the building, on the building, and so we have a very good understanding of what's on the site, and it's very little. I've been walking it, again, as I said, with these demo contractors, and they said there's very little here. It's just the structures. The settling ponds across the way.
When you said there's very little, there's very little.
Transite, transite, pipe wrap, window cutting, stuff like that, so.
Okay.
So, most of the cost is gonna be just to take the structures down.
I talked to a friend of mine who is a resident and works for the DEP today, and he's telling me something there. He's telling me that there is asbestos in the cost.
I just told you there was asbestos, yeah.
He told me it's a cost of 1.2 million. Do we, do we know that there is 1.2 million in this, in this quantity?
So, the ESM went out last fall and did an assessment and did testing and sampling. They put together a budget, and I believe that's the 1.2 million that you're talking about, and, and right now, I'm trying to verify those numbers through these contractors. So, that's, it's an ongoing process. But during this process, these buildings have now deteriorated so fast that I'm no longer allowing anybody on this site, and I'm gonna be shutting down Pot Cross Street next week.
And in fairness, my understanding is even if you did go forward with this.
These buildings are coming down regardless of what you do. Doesn't matter, I've already mandated that.
And that's not, I don't wanna lose sight of that, because we just have to take.
This is a public safety threat, and it, and it has to happen, just like the Sylvan Campbell House in front of the other school. That was mandated closed last summer as well.
But that was a, that was a town property, Reed and Barton. If we don't use it for the building site, why is it our responsibility to pay for it?
It's really jurisdiction, and once we know that it's, that's an imminent threat, then we, we own it. Just like any other structure, I have the authority to go onto the site if I see it as a public safety risk, take it down, then the town lawyer puts usually a mechanic's lien on the property, and then we usually recover the funds that way.
Just, I wanna just tweet something you said. You said, we own it.
No, we don't own it.
You said, we own it. We actually.
We own the property.
We own the demolition. Regardless.
We don't take possession of the property.
No, we try to hold on to that until we know it's clean.
Yeah, the property or estate possession of our property. I think this taking possession of our property is absolutely insane. I think, I think I just add that with the town.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may. You asked earlier about the information, just for transparency from the board of selectmen. At our last meeting, we already had asked for the CEC report. You know, obviously, we've had some questions throughout the process, so Mike did provide us, he provided the board of selectmen with the, with the information on May 24th. So, we received it on Friday. It does, in respect to what both Kevin and Diana said, there is a comment in here. And I'll preface this with, these documents will be up on the town website. I spoke to Mike this morning, and he's gonna see that, like a Reed Barton section will be up there, so everybody will have access to these, so you can review the information as well. They're also available to EPA sites, so you can see the reports that have been, I think a good dates back to 2015. But one of the comments in, in the initial information from the CEC did say neither EPA nor DEP will be completing the necessary assessment, remediation, or abatement of the entire site. And in the application, which we do have the CEC on our schedule for the next board of selectmen meeting, so, you know, I would encourage you guys to, to attend and ask questions because we'll, we'll then have the subject matter expert there at the time. But one of the applications that was submitted for the Brownsville Targeted Assessment Application Form does note in here that the Mass CEP currently estimates approximately 1.2 million dollars is necessary to remedy hazardous materials within the building such that the building can then be demolished. Says estimates for remediation have not been developed because of nature and extent of the impacts are not known. So, to Mr. Carmichael's point, they still have more investigation, but there is, you know, that base figure, I think, that you've heard, the 1.2 million dollars.
And that information that you just received, that on, like the date of the letter is on May?
Right, this past Friday.
Right, so that came from that department on May 24th?
He, the, the representative from the CEC provided some context to what he gave to us, but there are various dates on the forms.
And none of that deals with the storage tanks?
Now, EPA is gonna take the heat.
Yeah, this specifically, there are, there are other mentions in the reports that will be out online that talk about the storage tanks. I think a lot of that still is, they're.
So, EPA is, in the final cleanup of the Lagoon site on the banks, found oil seeping in, and now they're gonna actually take down more additional parts of this building to get at this underground oil at no cost to the town, so it's actually reducing our costs.
So, to that, the other thing that Diana, who works with the DEP says, they take these things down, they pay for it, and then what they typically do is, once a new owner takes possession, they actually do a cost recovery. So, they actually come back and say, okay, this is what we paid to do this, you now owe us this. And I guess, I guess the Coast Guard is also doing some of the work there?
Coast Guard is going the oil remediation, and these are funds coming directly from them and the EPA.
Right.
As far as I understand, they're not gonna be recovering these costs.
He said the EPA usually goes for cost recovery. The Coast Guard almost always goes for cost recovery.
May I just interject here? And I, I think it's wonderful to have these discussions about the site itself. The building committee's concern at this particular moment is that Monday, we are faced with a town meeting, and we are going to be looking for direction from the board of selectmen. We had a meeting this evening, we had a three-two vote, whether, you know, favoring taking a little bit more time. However, the article for the town meeting simply references the 25.7 for construction of two buildings. There is no reference to a site on the, in the article, so the site does not say forty-seven Elm Street. It just says, you know, 25.7 to be expended under the direction of the board of selectmen for the purpose of planning, design, construction, furnishing, and equipping a municipal center and a senior slash community center to be called the project. So, I, I don't mean to, well, I do mean to direct the conversation back to, we have to address an issue for Monday evening, whether or not the selectmen want to go forward with the article as it's written, and then into the municipal election. It is, it's your pleasure to decide, as I said, Mike. Board took a three-two vote this evening, so we are, we are very close. And as I said, our only goal is to provide the town with two, a functioning town hall and a functioning senior center in the least amount of time that it could possibly take, and for the least amount of money that it can possibly take.
Excuse me. For the information of the ignorant, three-two vote, which way?
Three-two vote, which way was to take our time and really consider this, to not move forward at the moment.
And just for clarification to that, I know there's nothing in the article that mentions the site, but that the budget is based on the Elm Street location.
The budget is based on the.
Yes.
Money that we were given for the Elm Street location. However, we would be more than happy to take 25.7.
Go play, right, sir.
My concern predominantly is that that 25.7 number was derived with a, with no land acquisition.
Correct.
So, I, I don't think we can move forward, at least, Mr. Chairman. I'm not comfortable moving forward, while I think that we desperately need both of these projects. I am not comfortable throwing a number out there. It's like, you might as well make it 50 dollars. I mean, without having a full budget and a full plan in place, this, this no longer makes sense.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I will tell you that the, two of the other sites that we looked at are all municipal on land. They would, won't accommodate both buildings, but they are municipal.
We've only had, we only had 45 minutes to discuss this since we got email strings and such. So, in our discussion, we did not talk at all about, you know, a Plan B or a Plan C or alternate sites. We just wanted to come up with a consensus, which obviously, it wasn't a consensus, but a vote on whether we should recommend going forward, you know, with the votes, and I just wanted, with the, with the two meetings, and I, and maybe we, I'm glad we have the town, the town moderator, we probably can't cancel him, but.
No.
Three of us did not feel comfortable continuing to promote a project, given the more recent information. Just, you know, when we had requested initially that these, you know, that the special town meeting and the ballot vote, you know, be put on the schedule to the board of selectmen back in March, we had indicated that it was contingent, that our request was contingent upon the completing, completion of the site cleanup by the EPA and the DEP. So, our opinion right now is we don't feel comfortable that that is going to happen.
And so, you are here tonight looking for the selectmen's vote?
We work at the pleasure of the selectmen, and so, you know, we're, there are, we report to them with our findings. We would very much like to continue working on this project through the summer as long as it takes to complete it, but we can't make that decision. It is up to the board of selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, the way that the town meeting functions would be, the finance committee actually moves the, the motion on the warrant, we can give our.
The meeting that we had, the joint meeting we had at the Elm School was on the date of the day before the town council had given us is the drop dead deadline for canceling the town meeting and the ballot. And that's the main reason we have that meeting with the building committee, was to get the consensus at the time to go from holding it forward. I know things have changed to informations, but as far as, as far as I know legally, we cannot just, we're not holding the town meeting because we've come beyond that deadline.
Had we had the information from the CEC consultants at that date, it would have made life a lot easier for anybody.
I agree a hundred percent, and I mean, we had a lot of questions, and we left that meeting with questions, and that was why we wanted to talk to you guys, because we felt, and I think we expressed that, that if we would just delay this and take more time, that we could answer those questions, you know, and I know you guys felt very strongly about moving forward, and now we have the information, but I think back to the point, we're, we're at a point of no return. I mean, you know, we, we had an opportunity to, to cancel that election, but we don't at this time unless we need to, you know, seek town council's advice.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if I could, I'm pretty sure my space maker just kicked in. But as the person who's going to be sitting on the stage Monday night, most likely to have stuff thrown at them, you know, and I realize that's way down on the list of concerns, but this is so outrageously poor and bad. I cannot begin to tell you how bad this is, because you're going to have a town meeting on Monday night, and now we're in the ridiculous position of, I was expecting possibly somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 people to come out to a town meeting on Monday night. Now, if we tell them, never mind, and don't worry about it, you really can't do that, because let's say, for instance, that the finance committee, after hearing this information tonight, surprisingly votes not to recommend the article and not move it, and the selectmen say, okay, we're not gonna move it, and the building committee is not gonna move it, and no one's gonna move it, so everyone says, okay, we're great. Any registered voter from the town of Norton can stand up at that meeting and move this article, and if they get a second, we will then vote on it. And if there are three people at the meeting, and two of those people vote in favor of it, then congratulations, you've got 25.7 million dollars for your town hall, because that's the way our system works. So, canceling the town meeting is not an option. There are many things that we could do to try to, to try to delay that, but I'm gonna tell you something as moderator right now. We could stand up and make a motion right away to adjourn the meeting and go on to something. I will not allow that. Somebody is going to stand in front of that meeting on Monday night and explain to the people who turn out why we're in the situation that we're in, and I'm not adjourning that meeting until somebody does that, because there is absolutely no reason why this should be as poorly planned as it was. And we've now got all these people coming out, somebody's going to stand there and tell them why and explain, and I will allow discussion. If I have to step down and move the question myself, I'll move it, because we are going to discuss this, and we are going to find out why this happened. I refuse to let town meeting become a mockery where four days before, on a 25.7 million dollar question, we're gonna tell people not to come, and we'll never get the word out. So, you now have two options. Either nobody comes, and you run the danger of God knows what happening, or everybody comes, and they're probably not gonna be in the best of moods when they sit there and find out that the plan is in chambers and no one's gonna do anything. So, I'm not gonna comment on how you have to go forward on the plan itself, how you have to do that. My job, and my immediate problem, is we have a town meeting that's been well advertised and planned out and expensive for Monday night. I need the selectmen and whoever else is involved to tell me how we're gonna do this, who's gonna explain to the people there where we are and why we are here, and how we're gonna move forward from there, because we're not just gonna say, you know, you, you have a real problem here, folks. You have a serious problem that really, I, you know, if everybody just stays home and a group of people gets together and says, let's go do this, they could, they could conceivably do it. So, somebody's gonna figure it out, and somebody's gonna figure it out pretty darn fast.
Mr. Moderator, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
In the event, what you were saying, this happens on Monday, if a no vote is taken or something like that, would it then be we'd have to cancel that, that special election as well, or we, that's, you both still have to proceed?
You, you can't cancel the election. You're now going to, the selectmen have no ability to cancel the election. So, you're gonna have an election. I, you know, I, I, I don't know why I'm laughing, but you, there is no ability to cancel the election. You're gonna have an election, and that's another problem that you need to understand, because if people say, oh, okay, they canceled the town meeting, I'm not gonna go vote in the election. And if, I find it hard to believe that there's a hardcore group that wants to build a town meeting at all costs and wants to ignore, you know, all the obvious, but if that exists, I didn't think this was gonna happen either, so, you know, strange things can happen. If they go, and if that passes, imagine that you hold the election, 72 people turn out, and it passes 40 to 32, okay? Now, you're 200 signatures at a town meeting away from approving 25.7 million dollars officially on an override and adding it to your taxes. And call me crazy, but I think one of the first questions that people might ask is, where were you gonna build it? And that could be a small problem, you know, but you are now, you are now locked in. You have to have the town meeting, and you have to have the town election, and somebody's gonna explain this to the townspeople. I've been doing this for 45 years, and I don't understand it, so somebody is gonna have to explain it to those people, and it's not gonna be me, because I don't know.
Mr. Moderator, with all due respect, the building committee has worked diligently on this with the information that we had available to us from the town manager and the board of selectmen. We have given the town our best estimate. Up until Friday, we were committed to the plan that you see on the town meeting warrant and on the election. I personally feel, as a resident of Norton, not as chairman of the building committee, that I would much rather have this information now than to go through a vote and have something come up at a later date that I was unaware that may have changed my vote. So, I am more than willing to stand up on town meeting floor and say, look, folks, we came forward and we're going forward with the absolute best information that we have, but something has come up.
Something has come up is not something you tell people for 25.7 million dollars. Something that come up is when you're late for dinner. This is not something that has come up, and, and I understand your point, but you need to have someone explain to the people why it didn't come up before.
And I think that we will have that available. It's a Monday town meeting. I'm assuming the board of selectmen are gonna be there. I'm assuming the town manager is going to be there, and none of us want to go forward with 27 point million, 25.7 million, or whatever the number is, and get the town in a situation that is inappropriate for it. That's why we're here tonight. That's why my committee brought our vote forward and said, this is where we are now. I'm sorry it was last Friday. I regret it was a holiday weekend, but here we are, and we do go forward with it, and it will be managed. And I do think the people of Norton will be grateful that these committees have had the nerve to. the people of Norton will be grateful that these committees have had the nerve to stand up and say, "Whoops, wait, not whoops, but wait a minute. Something new has come up, we need to put the brakes on, we need to breathe until September or October, and then we'll go back again." I think that's the only reasonable thing for us to do. That is my personal opinion.
And I'm not arguing that, I'm just talking the method, that somebody needs to stand up at town meeting, and I'm not just going to, you know, I'm not going to stop people from asking, "Why didn't you know about this sooner?" There has to be reasons.
And I think we do answer those questions, and I've just told you, I am more than willing to stand up and, and start the discussion.
I'm not sure it's your responsibility, though. I mean, you guys just found out, so I, I feel bad, because you guys are sitting up there, and you can, people are a little upset, and I, I hope it's not directed at you guys as a committee. You had a tough job to do, I think it's just frustration with this money that we now have to spend that could have been used for something else.
Oh, absolutely.
But it's not, I mean, some, something happened somewhere along the way, but I don't think it's the building committee's fault.
But I think we need to make a decision.
It is not our fault.
Yeah, I just want to make that clear.
I don't think it's anyone's fault that the information has surfaced.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that it's not anybody's fault. I, I feel like some things, that this is information that probably somehow or another was there, but didn't make it all the way through, because I've been at a few sort of joint meetings, also some of the independent conversations where people were asking questions without a lot of answers. I think you mentioned that you got the email, Renee, on May twenty-fourth, and you said there's sort of different dates within that email. I'm not sure that the information wasn't available and just not shared. There's something that just doesn't feel...
They're, they're very... Well, maybe, I don't know, I cannot speak to that. I can only speak to moving forward, and that's where I'm here to focus.
Didn't we allocate twice now, this is not, I'm asking a question, this is not a case for a question, but didn't we twice now allocate money for an LSP for this? And wouldn't, we don't have, we don't know that.
We don't know that.
I don't know. Should we not, we have an LSP for this?
The town has an LSP. The town has an LSP on site.
Paying for it, right?
Well, that's outside of our...
This is not, I'm not beginning to see...
Yeah, I'm just saying, I can't answer your question.
Should the LSP, because isn't part of their responsibility to, to tell us things like, "Hey, this may, this may be a long process that you..."
I think, if I may, a lot of the problem is, with this particular site, if anything is closed, if they're finding more beneath it than they expected.
Right, but, but that's my point, the LSP should remember to say, "Hey, guys, this isn't just, oh, you take a look at it, you know, oh, it looks like a two-day job." They should say, "There could potentially be oil tanks under this building, there's a second building we haven't looked at yet, right? There's a second building we haven't looked at yet. We don't know what's under that. This is the one that we're going to raise."
I think Amy can answer the question. From, from CEC, there's a two-hundred-and-ninety-four page report that was provided that will also be put on the website. I can tell you in all honesty, I have not made it through the entire report.
When did the report come out?
We received that report on, on Friday, May twenty-fourth.
So, then, then I would...
I don't know the date before.
But I would say that if we didn't receive it Friday, how do we, maybe on one day to decide?
Just give you a date of the report.
So, looking at page one of this phase-one environmental site assessment report that's dated in February two thousand and nineteen. We got it from Monday, Friday...
Friday, the twenty-third. So, I'd like to, I'd like to hand it over to my friend, Mr. Helmer, for a moment, he's got something he'd like to say, his arms are older than mine, so I raise my...
Thank you. Procedurally, where we're at now, you have no call, board of selectmen have no call. Finance committee has moved, has approved to recommend this article on the town meeting floor. Now, we didn't have this information. I'm going to move in a minute to reconsider, if I can, if this is a finance committee meeting, right?
Yes.
So I'm going to move that we reconsider. I will say that I think we have two options. One is to, to follow the lead and say no. The other one is to say we're going to recommend it anyway, and there is something to be said for that. If we recommend it, it gets on the floor as a FinCon recommendation, then the debate can get up about whether we should vote yes or no. It's on, but it's there. If we vote to reconsider and say we're not going to recommend it, then the question comes, how does it get on the floor to the, in the first place? If you're not going to move it, if the selectmen are not going to move it, anybody in the, in the audience can move it, but somebody's going to have to move it, because the normal committees that would do it would not. But I do think that to just sort of get along with this whole process, since at the moment, unless the finance committee reconsidered and votes no, the finance committee will be voting, will be moving this article on Monday, no matter what anybody else thinks.
That's what we do.
So I, right now, I'm going to at least give the committee a chance, with the permission of the chairman, to go about this, so I would like to move that we reconsider our recommendation of the article for the meeting on June third.
Second.
Motion and second, and further discussion.
I mean, to Paul's point that someone needs to move the article so there can be a conversation about it, I understand that. I would rather move it from my seat in the audience than have the finance committee recommend it, because frankly, I think that people see that we recommend something, and if this committee is recommending that we spend twenty-five point seven million dollars on something we don't know where we're putting, we look rather foolish. And I feel like I look foolish often enough, I don't need to do it on purpose. So, with that said, I, I think that we should take the prudent approach.
Since I was the one that, since I was the one to reconsider it last week, I have to agree with Paul. When he said five years at the meeting, he was right on, like he was talking to the EPA, because that's the number we got, said five years. Took ten years to clean the super site, so, I have to agree. I think if we remove it, it kind of completes, now that we have this information, it kind of completes what we're doing. It just doesn't make any sense, that's not rational. So I would, I would go along with Paul, a hundred percent, and say, "Don't move it."
Well, let's move on to reconsideration first.
Do we, do we, should we check in with the moderator about whether or not the article can be discussed if it's not moved in terms of delivering an explanation to the people as to why? We've talked about, the moderator spoke rather passionately about, you know, delivering an explanation, somebody getting up and delivering it. So, will we just hope that this comes from the audience then?
We cannot discuss it unless there's a motion on the article.
To move it. Bill, I could stand up and move it, if that's what...
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what could be done.
For discussion.
I'm getting into a lot of parliamentary procedure now. There are motions like to postpone indefinitely, or to table to a different time and place, but a lot of those motions are non-debatable. So you don't want to defeat the purpose by making a motion that's non-debatable, so yeah, you've got a motion. The only thing, if there was going to be any discussion, somebody has to move the motion. That's the only practical, right? Anybody, any, any person with a second can stand up and move it.
If the purpose is to get the article moved so we can explain what happened, okay, I'd be more than happy to wear my Kepala jacket.
And I would second it, just to get it on the floor. I, my concern is, I don't want it to be a FinCon recommendation.
I agree with you, Paul. I'm screening on the...
So, do you guys want to vote now?
Yeah.
We have to need a vote on reconsideration.
We've got to vote on the reconsideration.
On the vote on the reconsideration, I just could ask a question. Can we give to the FinCon and others, it's my understanding that, or maybe to the moderator, it's my understanding that your process, because we went to an, if you will, an independent building committee for the towns, voted on by the board of selectmen and with members of the school committee who voted it, you folks are all been voted on by the two boards. If they've changed their vote to three-two to stop this, doesn't that somewhat force the FinCon to go along with that, because you're not getting any type of motion coming forward?
Yeah.
In other words, you wouldn't typically be voting on something unless it didn't go through a process. It's not, you guys don't sit around and say, "Hey, let's just do this." You, you go through a process of which this, in our process, school committee, we send it to the board of selectmen, which is not required, but it does require you folks, but you folks can't move it until you get something from the school committee.
But, our process is to approve, take a vote on every article sent to town today. So because town meeting has to move forward, we have to either recommend or not.
Right, so therefore, if, if you receive new information from the board that is making the initial recommendation to FinCon to change the vote, then it would be, my understanding that your vote should go along with Paul's to reconsider, because the original members that are doing the work, taking the time away from their families, are saying, "Wait a minute, before I, I get a no vote from everybody, we need a timeout."
It would be no different if the planning board recommended an article, they decided not to recommend it, all of a sudden, then we wouldn't move it.
Right, okay. We would take their lead, we do that pretty much all the time.
Look, I'm just, I'm just saying, process is important, so that you don't establish a protocol.
No, this is not different.
Right.
So, we have motion second. All those in favor to reconsider?
Here we go.
I think it's unanimous.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move, well, we always move in the affirmative.
Right.
I would like to move that we retain our recommendation to recommend the article on the June thirtieth, June third meeting. I have it in the second.
Second.
Can the person who reconsiders vote for it? And, and, you voted to reconsider, but you're voting to retain the same vote.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm now mov, I'm moving...
Mr. Chairman. I would just like to point out that in getting reconsideration, the motion must come from somebody who voted on the prevailing side.
That's not true.
In reconsideration, it does.
That's not true. The rules that govern the FinCon do not, they're not Robert's rules of order, they do not...
It's not town meeting times, it's not the same process.
No, as someone who was a member of the FinCon for fifteen years, a former chairman, I can tell you that there is no restrictions on where a motion to reconsider can come from or how you can vote on it.
I just wanted to make sure that...
Yep, I appreciate that.
Moving forward, it was...
That's been a...
It comes out the way you want it.
A very popular question over the past couple of weeks.
I just wanted to make sure it comes out the way you want it.
Mr. Chairman, is, is Paul's motion no action at this time?
No, not to recommend. No, my, my motion is to recommend.
Is to recommend.
Because we, we always vote, we always vote that way on all articles. We, we move it positively, and then either affirm that motion or defeat it.
We never vote a no action, we do it to confuse all people.
So, if you want to recommend, if you both know, you don't want to...
If you do no action, we do, we use no action when we feel we have not gotten information that allows us to make a recommendation. I don't feel that way.
Okay.
So, we both know to recommend.
So, motion. Who second?
Second.
I did, Tom did.
Everybody.
Mike did.
Motion and a second, to again vote...
To recommend.
To recommend article one of the special town meeting on June third. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
So now, if we selected in the planning board, who wants to get up to explain, building committee, I'm sorry, who wants to get up to explain why?
So can I just ask you one question about the explanation? Jack, when you said that the, the email came out, or the report came out in February, it's May, so where's the disconnect there of all of those months of not, of not knowing the information?
Now, I don't know.
Right, so I think that's going to kind of be a, a question that might be asked on the town meeting floor, so I don't think we're going to get a discussion.
More further discussion on that, and I think, I think Mike needs to be present as well, so I think, I think, you know, the special town meeting is an opportunity for that if it's...
Right.
It chooses to move.
And I believe a lot of the problem is the fact that it's trickling information, it's not something that, it's, it's not something that's all that is not available.
This is the ground law, so I, I requested these documents from ESM to do the testing a month ago, when we had a conversation with the DEP and the EPA and CEC, we met late April, and I requested at that, I was requested at that time to review this, and at that time, we were still proceeding with the buildings along Elm Street, because they were in such poor shape. At that time, Dan Bacherfeld from ESM sent me part of the, the estimate, which just included the, the sampling, not the whole report, I had maybe a hundred and twenty pages. So then, in further conversation with Elliot Jacobs from the DEP, he said, "No, there's a three-hundred-page report that has an estimate." That just got to us like ten days ago. So we're just getting this information ourselves.
So I, I'm, I'm just going to clarify a point there, because the application for Brownsville was submitted April twenty-fourth, and in that application, there it says the one-point-two-million dollars, so I, I think that we need to...
This is from my emails, and what other people are getting, I, you know, I'm the guy in the field getting it done.
I understand, there's, and, and as I mentioned, there's a lot of dates in here, some in January, so, you know, I, I encourage everyone when the information is, is up online to read it as well, I mean, we're, we're going through it, and, you know, we have our own questions, but certainly the more informed we can be, the, the better. But, I, I think the issue here, you know, I certainly appreciate you guys reconsidering this and, and coming to us, it's a, a difficult situation. I, I agree with the moderator in that, you know, we have to go forward, we have to explain it, I mean, I will certainly, I have no problem standing up to talk about the information that, that I found through my research, you know, to, to further support the communications to the public, but, you know, I, I think, I think it's just a matter of what's the game planned for Monday, and, and how can we support that.
Our concern is Monday, and then we would look forward to continuing our work through the summer to, to bring these two buildings to fruition, if that is the wish for the board of selectmen.
I can only speak for myself right now, but that would, I would very much welcome, because we desperately need the buildings, maybe, maybe it won't, won't be the Elm Street site, maybe they won't be next to each other, but it's something the town desperately needs. And personally, I would, I mean, members of the board present can speak, but that would be my impression.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you on that, I, you know, again, working under the expectation we're getting a clean site. With the new information, it's, it's, we desperately need the buildings, it'd be great to have them together, but having them separate is fine as well, we need them.
So I, I agree, we need the buildings. What I'd like to do, though, is, is re-group about the process completely, to make sure that, that we're doing the right thing, and to make sure that we have controls in place that these things don't go over. And I think maybe we can have that discussion other than, I mean, certainly, you know, Miss Steele needs to be involved, but I, I think we need to take a step back as a board and, and determine how we want this to proceed, but, but definitely, we'll support that we need the buildings, and we need to figure out how to do it, and, and I, I would appreciate, you know, the, the participation of FinCon, because regardless, this is, you know, from perspective of the buildings, there are going to be funds that we need from the perspective of the site cleanup, you know, fortunately, it's stuck in our hands, unless, I know one of the documents, it, it said that we don't know who purchased, who was the previous owner of the property prior to nineteen-seventy-three, if we could find that out, we may have, you know, some, some way of recovering some funds, maybe Peter had something, you could do some research on that. See who owned it prior to, or, sorry, who sold it in nineteen-seventy-three, but...
On Elm Street?
Yes.
Yes? Ah, ah, because we need a new town hall and senior center. And I agree with all of you on that.
From, from my standpoint, I think it'd be great if, if it's possible, to supplement from a building team with a member from FinCon, perhaps a board of selectmen, school committee, just to make the process more cohesive.
I will say, according to the town bylaw, which was the way I started with the building committee, departments and boards that are involved in facilities under the purview of the building committee are allowed to have a temporary member to vote on those issues, and we would welcome a temporary member representing the town hall and a temporary member... And we would welcome a temporary member representing the town hall and a temporary member representing the council on age.
Can I just reference one thing as well, too, because the actual number one bullet point on our joint meeting agenda is communication between boards. So I think this is a great way for all of us to kind of talk through some things, and it's my hope that going forward with this project, whatever happens, you know, we change the name, or you guys change the name to a community center, that you can circle in the schools and really make this a true community center, because I think there's a huge benefit to having students with seniors. I think there's a lot that can happen there. So it's my hope that all of us can do this a little bit more often and everyone have some input and really, you know, this could be a bigger and better plan moving forward in the right spot for everybody, but I just think.
My last minute.
What's that?
My last minute.
Yeah, but I just think that having this open communication and all sitting down and talking, this is how we get our problems solved, this is how we move our town forward in a positive direction. So I just would like to, you know, ask that we kind of continue with this.
We would like, on behalf of my committee, we don't want to take up any more of your time, we'd like to thank you for letting us come to your meeting this evening and present our current position, and we appreciate your support.
We thank you for everything you've done, and I'm sorry if the, we don't know what we did, but we look forward to.
You look at the endgame, the boughs that have moved come along the way.
I'm glad that you have that optimistic view and continue to have it. Like I said, I personally and the board thanks you for all the work you've done. And unfortunately, the package that we opened on Christmas morning had cold, and wasn't a nice toy, so.
There's always a way to go forward.
Do you guys have to vote red or no?
I don't think so, we've already, we already voted to move forward to a special town election, but we have to.
Yeah, so I think we're pretty much stuck with the fact that we moved it forward, but that doesn't mean that we can't make our feelings felt on Monday.
Okay, all right.
The town meeting still for June 3rd.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I said I have so much of your time.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the first thing on our agenda, anyway, was communication between boards and how do we keep, as Sherry said, how do we keep this kind of discussion going. One thing that we started with the selectment is that we share our minutes with you and we ask that you share your minutes with us, just so we have an idea of what goes on. We have talked as a board about trying to at least have one representative at each meeting as we can, just to keep, then that person would let the rest of them know what's going on. So I don't know what each board thinks of that or what your feelings are about that.
If I may, as a member of the board, I'd be open to maybe getting a couple of members of each board get together on a monthly basis and just be able to discuss issues that way wouldn't have to be, you know, opposed to, you know, everybody get together. And then when we feel the need for having your one get together, maybe it could be like every other topic, something like that, but at least keep the line of communications open, so we know where your board's coming from. We have a fine.
I don't think we can just neatly got a couple of people from each board, I don't know if you can, we can do that.
We can, we've done it, we've done it with the plans.
Can't have four, is it three?
Right, so we only get to be two, I'm sure with the other number. We've been doing it for the last two years, with Fox and Mary, with his nine, then we had, we had FinCon members as well, two FinCon members that used to join us a month or a while.
We had, had.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a good idea.
I mean, we have discussed, and I think we started about a month ago, to, at least one of us, not several, to at least get to the board of selectmen at every meeting, just to, just so that where they, if one of us, either to take in the information or if, you know, questions can be directed to one of us and answer it, to answer it, and I think if we can extend it to the school committee, you know, that would go a long way to keep everybody on the same page.
So my concern, and one of the reasons why I put this down, is I felt that the school department this year was set up out of meaning, and I'm on the record with that, I've communicated that to members of the school committee. We were called into a meeting where all of a sudden all the department heads from the town side were there, and in some cases, not very happy with what I said or Mr. Sevaz said at the time, because the school department was quote, going to take money, come in and take money via the finance committee, and as I communicated to Bill as the chairman, we knew where the numbers were adding up, and we weren't asking, and have never asked since I've been here, never since I've been here, to take from another department to put into our department. I continue to reiterate, we ate our own last year, we let go 19 people, and then, yes, on town meeting floor, not seen very positively by folks, took the funds from healthcare savings and moved 100, and I believe it was $143,000 at the time, at the town meeting floor, and it was communicated about, I don't know, about a day beforehand, but then in the actual, the hour before town meeting took place. And so, that's part one for me, after being sick here for six years. The second part that goes with that is the phony baloney information that people spread about the school department budget, and that's what I'm calling it. People just come up with non-factual information, they send it to boards, and then board members spend time on it by saying, we do this and we do that, and we have this and we have that. And so I'm simply asking, if the school department's going to be on discuss, I just think we should be there. I don't spend any time ever questioning how the town spends its money. I might privately say something, that I say, well, I don't understand why they're doing that, but at the end of the day, it's not my job, I don't live in the town, I don't have a vote in the town, I'm just quote, the superintendent. But I think we've shown that we're trying to be partners, it's the biggest business in town on the public sector, it has the number one most employees in town, of course, it's going to be the biggest budget in town. I mean, two plus two is still four. And so it was frustrating to hear last year that folks thought that we were aggressive in the way that we approached getting that money, and it was frustrating for me this year, feeling that I was being asked questions and comments that clearly were trying to articulate in some way, shape, or form that, you know, the school department can do this and they can do that, so don't ask for this, don't ask for that. We have a pretty tight budget, we're the only budget to not receive a level services. For the six years I've been here, we've never received level services. I don't know if there's too many communities around that can say they have a department in their town that never gets level service, I think in this town, the other one might be, every once in a while, I hear the library is part of that discussion, but besides those two departments, rightfully so, in terms of, in terms of public safety, if we added an SRO, you can hear me say, well, that's not, it doesn't give us the ability to hire a physician that we need. We need the SRO, I can assure you of that, and I'm willing to, in talking to the chief about trying to share some good information with the two boards so that we can, so you folks can see what that physician is actually dealing with on a day-to-day basis. What happened tonight for me, sitting back here, was fantastic, not because the outcome might not be a positive one, because I really feel that your small community needs its public, a town hall and a senior center, without a doubt, before any major huge school project that we have, it needs to be something that's, that's done. The process continues to be my problem, right? The process of how you get to the endgame is a sticking point for me, because things are always going to change with the FinCon, because your folks have limited funds and you have to try to share the wealth as much as you can, you try to do a good job with it, and to be quite honest, I think in general you do. But the process sometimes is broken, it's just outright broken, because what it does is, you know, it, believe it or not, I actually do watch the board of selectmen meetings or the FinCon meetings now, usually right after they're taped, if I'm not at a meeting because I'm not on the agenda, because my phone blows up after one of those two meetings on a regular basis. They go again, the schools, they talk about, is that true? I'm like, where do these people get this information? People receive letters, recently, some of you've received a letter. The misinformation on that is line by line. What I verge, and I can't do it tonight with the tech, but what I verge is go to the transparency center on our website, it is not my numbers, it is audited numbers that are on there, we pay $5,000 a year for that website. Why? Because I think it's important for anybody to go on there and say, in comparison, no one spends too much on this, in comparison, no one does, you can decide who you want to compare to, so if you want to compare us to North Everboro, go right ahead, you want us to compare us to East Bridgewater, go right ahead, you want to compare us to Brockton, you can, you can look at any comparison about numbers, staff, ratios, and so on and so forth. The dumbest thing you could ever use, and this is my opinion, is averages. Averages are the dumbest things you could ever use, in my opinion, because what averages do is they change from year to year. So the average salary is, okay, so 15 people next year leave and they're retirees, and 250 people come in, so now you're considered the lowest paying district around. No, that's not true, we know comparison to apples to apples on pay scales, that's how you look at it. What's a teacher with 15 years with a master's degree working in such and such a town bank versus a person here? What do they pay for healthcare in comparison to a person here? That's how you make comparisons, and that site allows for you to do that, it allows for you to go in there, it's always two years behind, so right now, only FY18 is up there. By next December, January, February, right around there, FY19 will be up. And then you can actually do three-year comparisons, you can choose the district, you can go with similar districts, you can go with nearby districts, you can go to the default, which just chooses a bunch of districts in the area. And what it does is you can then say, well, you guys have too many administrators in comparison, you have too many administrative assistants, you don't, you don't have enough, I've noticed that you have too many councils, you don't actually have enough guidance councils, you have too many addressing councils. You can make some of those determinants, I think those decisions belong to the school committee, not to FinCon or the board of selectmen, but then you can actually have the information, it's not my information in terms of my providing it to you, you can look, and of course, you're free to ask me to have those reports for you, and I'll do them. I told Mr. Evans at the last meeting, from now on, month-to-month reports are going to be published, line item budgets, we're going to be sending them to you, I'll send them to the chair to distribute as you wish, I actually believe now I have you actual, all of your emails. And I'm just going to, once Matt prepares the end of month report, we will file with the school committee on our agenda and you will get it as well, so that you can see that there's X number of dollars left in a certain account, why are they asking for money in that account, so that you see it, or if the money gets transferred, so that way, folks can't say, well, you still have 100 and X number of dollars. We publish a line item budget, I've never seen the town department's line item budget since I've been here. My hometown, I'm a representative of town meeting, I'm actually not a representative this year, I'm out because I chose not to do it, one town meeting's enough for me, and in my hometown, they run five to seven nights, and it's representative, not open, so it's a little different of a process, but to be, you know, asking the right questions is always important, publishing line items, we get, and that's why our warrant is this thick, it's a $100 million business with every line item that you can think of for every single department. So when you want to put a hold on an article, you're putting on a hold, not because you're all of a sudden saying, what's somebody's salary, it's already there, especially the non-union personnel, like we are, we're putting our non-union personnel administrators from principle up, I'm not going to put a secretary, not a union secretary salary on there, somebody can ask for it, but the teachers' union, all the union contracts are on there now, and all the administrators' contracts will be on there in the future, so if you want to challenge somebody's salary, hopefully not their name or their job, but if they're getting paid too much, the information will be on the site for you if you'd like, you can also just call us, we'll gladly give it to you. And I think lastly on this topic, if I may, is when we look at trying to provide you numbers, it's not that I don't want to give it to you, but I really believe it goes from chair to chair, not from, not from a chair being committed to the superintendent, because I work for them, I work for the five of them, I work for the town, but I work directly for them, so one of my protocols for communication should be that, I think whoever the three chairs are, on each of the committees, should, you know, if you don't meet one email that goes to the other two that says, blah, 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 whatever the topic is, so that way, the three board, the chairs of the committee can then make a decision on who to communicate it to their members, or to say, well, no, this is a discussion that we're going to have at our monthly meeting or a bi-monthly meeting, or whatever the case it may be. Because what happens, we're all public records, folks, right? And we end up with a lot of information that we share, and we have to be careful about sharing information that's a private information about staff or, you know, folks that work for us and all that, but at the same time, the chairs can have conversations amongst themselves about what information should we be receiving versus, you know, what information, you know, it's over the line, this is not a public records discussion. So that's what I'm asking for, again, I work for them, I work for you in a different, in a different role, but I just don't think that going forward, that any department should feel at any point that another department is trying to get money, this department isn't doing that, I can only speak for my department, I have very good conversations with both of the chiefs, I hope to have more conversations with some of the other department members, I know that I can't do, we can't do our job with certain things, with all the building commissioner, the health agent, and so on and so on and so on with all the other departments, but I hope that there's a way for the three, the three chairs to constantly communicate that way. That's my piece.
I think that, I just want to comment on that as well, because Mary Steele and I have said for years.
I'm sure.
We need to get to a point where everyone gets their budget and we start nitpicking each other about what everyone's getting. The reason why, and Mary and I just communicated about this the other night, the reason why it's still happening is because other departments are getting level service or growing, and there's one department who isn't, that's not getting level serviced. So that's the frustration, and we talked about this at the FinCon meeting, of taking mandates off the top and then divvying up everything else from there so that we can all start to grow together. So I think that's part of the issue, it would be great if we could get to a place where you get your budgets and you stop. We shouldn't be looking at the town to say, oh, great, two new cemetery workers, and we've got to, we've got, you know, made cuts. It's not about, we should want to see our town grow collectively, all of us, so I think that that's a point. And another thing I would love to see, I know Joe, you and I have talked about this, I think that for you and Matt to sit down with Mike and James, to really start to develop a plan for our town, because I think that when there's no communication, things just get broken down, and I think that's what we're seeing. I think it would be nice to have open communication with, you know, you as our leader and your business manager, and Mike as our town leader with his town account, to really start to, you know, kind of dive into some things and move things forward.
Well, I think too, our joint meeting with you guys when we were telling you about our budget and really explaining what our mandates were versus, you know, what the general education, I mean, that's when money was able to be found for us, which we are extremely appreciative of, but without having those joint meetings and the joint communication, how would you know?
Chairman. Yeah, I just want to, your point is well taken, and I know that night was, in retrospect.
It was, it was a tough night.
Right, and Clark Flatford, both of you, and, if you'd question. Right, but in retrospect, it was probably not the best.
To me, it's, to me, any, any question's a good question.
Well, right, and I think the questions were.
Perfect.
Were right, but maybe the form could have been softer, but I apologize, but.
I'm not seeking that, but I appreciate it. I'd like to say.
But one of the, I just want to continue, one of the frustra, I don't want to use the frustration, as a committee, we've, we've talked about this, you know, we're in session twice a year, so we go into almost like on-off mode, so all of a sudden, when we close out a town meeting, you know, okay, we'll see you in two months, and then all of a sudden, information can get lost or changes quickly, and we're not able to come up to speed maybe in a more processed way, so I don't.
We have discussed.
We have discussed.
All year, to change our mandate to meeting all year, and I think we need.
So as, we probably, and I think it's a great idea, get the committees together and then maybe have subcommittees, is another way to say it, but as we've talked, you know, the town is growing, it's growing considerably, and there's going to be a lot of changes in the next five, 10 years, in many aspects, many projects, and so, I guess, declare the information, you know, stronger relationships, it's all about relationships. At the end of the day, we live in the same town, so. At the end of the day, we live in the same town, it's all about relationships incredibly. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Sort of to go with that, and, you know, for us, it's really easy. If the selectmen or the schools are talking anything with a dollar sign, we should be included. And not really find out about it at the last second, or be able to have that sub glue to say, hey, let's discuss that further. And I think that's been some of the frustration that this committee has unfortunately taken out upon certain people at times. We're getting information at the last second. And it's really hard to figure out how to divvy up that pie when you don't have time to actually dig into it.
And one of the things I'll say as well, is it is hard. We need a standard format. We've discussed this. We don't get information in a standard format. We should be dictating what we want, in what format, and how we want to see that. Because a lot of times, the information we give, it changes. Okay, this number changed. But it is our responsibility to ask questions if we don't understand something. So we fully understand it to make a recommendation to the townspeople. That's why we're here. But we do need to do a better job laying out what schedules we want, when we want them. This year, I'll agree, we had a meeting before the town meeting to discuss bylaws. At the last minute, there was a whole host of questions. That can't happen anymore. Because it doesn't look right, transparency is out the window. And I think one of the things we need to do is make this a transparent process for everyone, so there is no behind the scenes, no back filtering, no special groups, no social media platforms, okay? If there is, we get them all on the table, get the answers, and let people hear what we have to say in a unified platform.
Right. So one second. So I just wanted to touch on one thing, speaking to secondary to your point. Dr. Brey, you mentioned the transparency center we have on our website. Is there a town option for that same service?
Yes, there is.
And so my point to the selectman would be, maybe speak with the town manager to try and get that information out there. I know that the two newest selectmen, congratulations by the way, have talked about transparency. So maybe that's a step from the town government side that we can see, you know, we know what our numbers are, we dig through them all the time. But, you know, to Dr. Brey's point, we don't know police, fire, highway, cemetery, we don't know any of that. And as a citizen, I think that's something I would also look for as well, to know where my tax dollars, because, I mean, yes, I have three kids, one's just about out of the school system next week, two are still in it. So for me, it's starting to trend more towards where my tax dollars going. I'm still supporting the schools, but what else are we getting our bank for the buck? So I think that's something, maybe the selectmen, along with the town managers, should take a look at as well, the transparency.
I think you bring up a valid point, and it's something that I've been thinking about, because I did appreciate your presentation at the town meeting, and I think that both the fire department and the police department with the budget size that they have should do something similar, so there is more transparency. And, you know, I came into it, we were a couple weeks from our election, so it's, you know, it's difficult to catch up, but certainly I have a lot of notes. And I mean, we had the discussion about how do we create this plan? And I think that that plan and that vision and strategy for, you know, a five or 10-year look includes, what do we want to see? How do we want to see it? When do we want to see it? Because I know I did, I think I mentioned in one of the meetings that I asked Mike about, when does he provide for the selectmen with the budget? And at the same time, that it goes to FinCon. And I think that we should have it beforehand, so we can see, what are we looking at from the town perspective? You know, if we're responsible for setting priorities, we need to have that look, and we certainly can't have it two weeks before we're going to be discussing it on a town meeting floor.
And I just want to say, the purpose of the finance committee is to review the entire town, town side, we make recommendations on the town side and the school side. And when I hear you say, you know, that, you know, there's only one department that hasn't been level serviced, I mean, all departments aren't created equal. You have the dog, you know, the dog officer, and you have the school department. They're not, they're both departments, but they're a little bit different. You can't, that distorts things just a little bit, so just, and when it comes to the schools, we do not pick apart your budget. We look at your budget, but we, all we do is recommend one line item, that's the same that's voted at town meeting. So, you know, the superintendent is gracious enough to come before us every year and explain it. But ultimately, we have one figure to move, and that's it. So, you know, and we don't criticize saying, why do you do it? We question, but we don't say, no, we're not the ones comparing, saying that, you know, you're spending too much in this area, too much in that area. That's not what we do. We listen, and, you know, there's a budget, one final number that comes up, and then we make that recommendation to the town. That's all we do.
But sometimes the questions are repetitive, and we're answering them, and it's almost like we get asked again, like we're, there's going to be a different answer. So in my point about other depart, you know, us being the only one not level service, it's, I want to stop hitting, I've been saying this for years since I joined. I'm the one that asked these joint meetings. So I, the hard part is, we, at some point, we all need to start trusting each other, that we're doing what we're doing to move this town forward. And that was my point in that. I get the dog officer is very different than the schools, I get that. I want to see all of us grow, not just the schools. I'm in this for the entire town. So that was my point in saying that. That's why there's still the questioning, because when other people are, you know, growing, and another one is being cut, or having to make cuts, that's where you're going to get this constantly. So that was my point in saying that, just to clarify.
I would propose one thing. I think you should be picking us apart. I think you should absolutely be picking us apart. I say to Joe all the time, if we can't answer a question, then somebody has to explain it to you. We have a huge piece of this town's budget, I absolutely understand that, and we welcome any questions. Because I think, and Matt, same, same goes for him, they better be able to answer your questions. And this is not some game, this is real life money. So I would say, next time around, pick us apart. If we can't answer it, then guess what? We're going to change that number. Because that's not the right number.
You do have open meetings, like we do. So, I mean, if the fact that we, or I, don't know as much about your budget as I should, that's on me as well. Because I can attend any one of your meetings, or...
Right. But I'm saying, when we come to you with our budget request, pick it apart. Ask and say, hey, why is that number so high? We darn well better be able to answer it. Because if we can't, then we'll change that number.
Well, we do that to a certain degree. But, you know, ultimately, like I said, it's the one dollar amount that...
Do it to the nth degree. We welcome it.
We do it to the administration. When we set our budget, usually Dines, being the numbers background, he picks them apart. And there's times where during our sessions, it gets hasty, you know, and we don't always agree, but that's what, you know, the five of us are shown to do, and we keep the administration on their toes, just like you as a FinCon should keep us on our toes. I mean, and that's the general notion of where we should be as a town, is, you know, checks and balances. You know, by all means, pick us apart. You know, we have the transparency working all the time, and we usually like to pick on Dines because he's the numbers guy, and he uses words that I don't even know...
I'm not just a fan of what you guys, of what these guys do.
But if I just came for a second, see, to me, calling on every FinCon member to be at a meeting every single week for, you know, 30 weeks, I can't imagine that you're going to have a lot of people that want to do this volunteer job, number one, sets talk. Number two...
He's only got 40 minutes.
But the second part, but the second part is, a lot of communities, even with open town meetings, what they do is they create subcommittees in the finance committee. So when my budget is going through the process, three of you are at the table with the school committee during two or three different sessions, getting the information for YA, YB, YC. And then when you come, when I come to present, you've got three people who can speak to, well, we did ask that question because of this, we're concerned about the amount of money being spent in this line item. Same thing for everybody else. Because it, to me, it's about efficiency. With all due respect, I don't want to go in front of the finance committee every week. I just don't. And I say that respectfully. I'd rather meet you at your home for a glass of wine. But on the other side of it, that's the only way you're going to grow these departments, is to have some efficiencies within the finance committee process. Because at the end, you're absolutely right, by statute, the school committee, the FinCon can only vote, and the town meeting can only vote a bottom number for the schools. They're the only ones who can move the muddies around the way that they believe they should be, they should be doing.
Your budget is fluid, where else is the standard budget? The town side, so it doesn't move.
And we can set, we can set a three, four-year general education budget of what it's going to look like, so as long as my contracts are relatively set, we can establish that. I can establish to a certain percentage my special ed budget, or my mandates budget. But there's a good percentage of that budget that is, that's a wild card. You know, I think Matt worked at North Borough South Borough, I think some of you have seen what North Borough South Borough did, because there are regional, multiple different school committees and towns with different boards and so on. And what they've done is created a five-year package that basically says that the economy looks favorable, for example. So if the economy looks favorable, FinCon can say, well, this is a good year for us to do A. It doesn't look favorable in terms of our projected, you know, new licenses coming into town or permits. And it at least gives you the sight about what a budget could look like in a community, instead of, you know, some of the things that we do now.
And that's something I've been hounded about since I've sat in the seat with Mike, is I need to be able to see that. I need to be able to see a year, two, three. So we collectively can make an informed decision that just isn't the 2020 budget, but it's also the 21 and the 22. And we're not there yet.
I think, let me go back. Ancient historian. But back when I came onto the FinCon, there were no town managers, or assistant town managers. There was nothing, there was no two and a half.
That's right.
There was nothing. Every department came before, we met three times a week, FinCon did, from 7 till 11 at night. Leota Kopech brought cookies and something, and we had to stop and eat those. But we met, and we put the budget together. And each department came in and told us what they needed. And we looked at it carefully, decided whether we thought they needed it or not, but we could decide on a figure without having to balance it against something else, because there was a two and a half limit. We're still trying to deal with the ramifications of two and a half. Never have, partly because we've never used a general override, which is one of the few towns in the state that is not. But the other thing that can happen, this is why planning is good, but planning doesn't give you total foresight. You can have what happened to us about seven or eight years ago, where we got a notification from the state saying, the data that we received, this is literally what it said, shows that you are a much more affluent town than you were the last several, the last years. And therefore, we're cutting your state aid from 52% to 47%. You get that. All of your nice plans for your budgets have gone, you know, and...
Respectfully, that doesn't happen that often.
It doesn't happen that often, but when it happens, it takes a long while to recover from it. And the point we're, the point we're in on all of this is that we're not just doing budgets that are the right budgets for individual departments. We're doing budgets that will squeeze us to live within these limits that have been put on us, some from the outside, some from river sources coming from within, all of that sort of thing. The finance committee must present something which at least it thinks is going to be a balanced budget within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half and State Aid. Those figures change all the time. So yes, plan, particularly good, I think, that we have here, and it's very useful, is the plan that we have developed over the years with, for capital improvements. We have a five-year plan now for capital improvements, that every department contributes to, schools, fire, everybody, small and large. And we, some of what they request gets approved, some of it does not. That works. I think it's going to be much more difficult to make plans. I'm fine with plans. In fact, I think you have to do this kind of planning, looking ahead in terms of what you see. As long as you don't say, when you get to that year, well, three years ago, we said it was going to be this, and it's got to be this, because things change. We all just saw tonight how things can change. So there's got to be a lot of flexibility, a lot of fluidity, and all the communities, not just Norton, we're all working under a set of restraints, or policies, or whatever else, where we get mandates from the state which they don't fund, or state aid is argued in the legislature, we don't even know what it's going to be when the town meeting comes along. You're going to have to live with that. And so you can have a plan, but the plan in the future, which I won't be participating in, thank goodness, will just have to have a lot of flexibility involved in it.
It's a fluid plan, it's not a, this is a number, and this is it. You have to be able to adjust.
And when we decide what that figure for the schools is going to be, it's taking into account the needs of the schools, and the schools have been underfunded for many years. We all know it. Every member of my committee would say that. But we also have a lot of other departments, frankly, that are underfunded, or are so small, or so down to the core, that there's nothing you can change in them. I mean, if you have a three-person department, you know, in the Board of Health, or some other place like that, the building inspector has, you know, self, and maybe a secretary, maybe part-time, maybe full-time, you can't go, you must have one, you're required to have one. There's nothing you can do with that budget. Absolutely nothing. So it's really, you've got library, police, fire, schools.
I think part of the...
Probably maybe, but, you know, that's about what you've got to play with. And you've got to get out of the limit.
I think part of the reason that putting together a best estimate is important, is because I feel like we cannot credibly stand in front of this town and say, we need an override, and it needs to be $1.8 million, $2.6 million, $3.9 million. I have no idea. I don't know what the number is supposed to be, because I can't project what it looks like two years from now, based on our best estimated assumptions of what it's been for the last five, or the last 10, or 15. We need to be able to put together some sort of a game plan, because we're never going to get ahead of it if we keep just slapping together a budget year after year.
Could I speak for a second, just on the role of the finance committee? Because I'm just a little concerned as a position that appoints the finance committee. The finance committee is at once one of the more powerful and one of the least powerful boards in town. The power it has is by recommendation. Really, the sole purpose of the finance committee is to make recommendations to the town meeting. And the finance committee, I don't go looking for CPAs and budget managers to appoint to the finance committee. I look for people who understand numbers, I look for people who understand the town, I look for people with common sense and who can make decisions. The finance committee was never meant to be the committee that decides what the budgets should be. And at the risk of disagreeing with my friend Paul, no, you don't have to recommend within the proper two and a half limit. You're absolutely free to recommend more than the two and a half limit. It's probably not a good idea, but there's no, there's no rule that says you can't. And that's what I want to get. Shifting the burdens of the finance committee, aside from being unfair, is unwise. The finance committee is not just the finance committee. In many towns, it's called the advisory committee, because it makes recommendations to the town meeting, even on things that are not financial. You can make an argument that everything is financial. But when I came to the board in 1974, Paul had already been on the finance committee for four years. And he and I are probably the only ones left who remember Leota's snacks and the things that we did. But Paul's absolutely right. You've got a binder, and your binder was about this thick, you know, one of those old black binders. And you went through, and we talked with every single person to do it. And it was a terrible way to run a government, which is why we have a school superintendent, which is why we have a town manager, which is why we pay money to people to present us to these things. The problem is, once they present it, we ignore it. And my feeling is that we've done the budget process out of necessity a little bit, but we've done it backwards. We don't look at, except I think the school department does, but we don't necessarily look at what we need and say, "Okay, this is what we need to do the job right and to have to, and this is what it costs. How do we get there?" Instead, we wait for the state to tell us the funding and we wait to see what the two and a half limit is and we say, "Okay, here's the part of money that we have, now how do we spend it?" Now, that may very well be a necessity, but it's a stupid way to do a budget. And if we're really going to be serious, then what everybody should get together is say, "If the finance committee, the school committee, the town manager." The town manager plays the most critical role in this whole process because by charter and by ballot, that person is the one that puts together the budget, even though it's the finance committee, the one that's moved to town meeting. But the town manager, even on the school department budget, it comes under his jurisdiction to say what the final number is going to be in terms of presenting it to FinCom. You have to take everybody together and say, "All right, listen, this is what we need." Not to be extravagant, but this is what we need to present the kind of town we have. And add it all up and say, "It's X number of dollars." And now say, "Okay, we only have Y number of dollars available. What are we going to do? Are we going to automatically cut or are we going to try to get to the level where services are actually set?" We don't do that. Why? Because we lack the guts, we lack the political will, we lack the, you know, we lack the determination to do it. Suck it up, you know? Let's find a determination to do that. Maybe we get our butts handed to us again. But we'll never know. We do a disservice to this town when we fail to present them with a budget option that funds the town at the, at the level that the people who are most involved with it think it should be. And we, we think we're doing our job when we, when we recommend a budget that fits within the Prop 2 and a half cap. We're not. We're doing a disservice to the townspeople when we continue to pretend that that's our job. Our job is to tell them what we really believe they need as a town. And if they say no to that, then fine, they're the bosses, they're the ones that make their decision. But if you don't present them the option, how in hell are they going to know? You know, they don't know. So that's what we don't do. I'd like to see the town manager and the school superintendent and the finance committee and the school department, all of us get together and say, "You know what? What should our budget be? And here it is, and it's going to be way more than we're spending. I guarantee you, it's going to be way more than we're spending." But at least people know. At least that's the honest approach. You'll take crap for it. You'll, you know, it'll be, "What don't you understand, Proposition 2 and a half?" When Moses came down with the tablets on Proposition 2 and a half, that, that made sure that we had to, you know, we had to do that. That was a number plucked out of the air. And we've gone by it for 40 years and we're one of the suckers that have stayed within it for 40 years. You wonder why we're at this place? That's why we're at this place, because we haven't done our job in truly evaluating our budget. So until we do that, until we come up with an honest evaluation of where we need to be and present it to the townspeople, then none of us have done our job. And we can blame ourselves, we can blame lack of trust, we can blame social media, we can blame whatever we want. The bottom line is, we haven't done what we needed to do. And believe me, as somebody who paid the price for bringing that up before, you know, I've lost elections and I've won elections and, and you know, in the end, it doesn't matter. You've got to do what you need to do. So I would like to see that start. I would like to see the town manager present a budget and say, "Hey, you know what, folks? Here's what the town in Norton's budget should look like. And here's what we have right now. Now, you tell me where you want to go and how you want to divide those services." That's how you budget. Everything else is just capitulating. You know, we've got to decide whether we want a budget or whether we want a capitulation.
That's it for us, our agenda. I know you guys have some.
I want to add one thing, kind of on top of what Billy was saying. And I've said for many years, probably 15 years or more, that I think they should be override every year, even with just $250,000. And even if it's just to get the voters to come out and vote. But if you hit them with a realistic number every year, like the school was short $500,000, I think we should have gone from $500,000 override. I think that way it's a true number. You can, you can say, "This is the reason," and it's basically what Billy is saying. But I've been saying it, like I said, at least for 15 years, the fact that instead of trying to come in with these like $2 million overrides, if we've been doing these things on a fiscally irresponsible way, I'm not going to say any of them would pass, but at least we could go back and say it was dry. And if some did pass, you put the two and a half percent on top of those and we wouldn't be in the hole we're in now. And one other item before I let you people go is, being an old person, I like the meetings face-to-face because I like to see, talk to someone in their eye so I know where they're coming from. And social media just doesn't get it to me and not only that, my fingers are too fat. And I'm going to, I'm going to say something inadvertently, but hit the wrong key.
Autocorrect.
I curse that all the time.
And if I could, I know Mr. Billups has been trying to get a word in and he's very timid.
I never say anything. The school department knows that I never ask them any questions. Just one thing that was mentioned over there, that we don't know what the town budget is. And the selectmen don't get the town budget till the last minute. I think that's totally unbelievable because we get it months ahead of time. We don't refine it, but we get it, it's out there. Okay, it's not on social media, it's not on a website, but it is available, okay? And if it wasn't available, we wouldn't be able to go line item by line item and look at the budget. And it's line item by line item, okay? And we do that and we spend lots of time doing it, okay? But the other thing is, we want to get a point across, next year, let's not use any free cash. Let's take the free cash and do what free cash is supposed to be for, non-recurring expenses. Wow, what a novel idea. Try that for one year and see what happens. Maybe people will recognize that we have a major problem. And until we continue to put a bandage on and coast along, everybody's going to just sit back and say, "Gee, I don't understand that they want all this money, but look, they're still functioning, the lights are on, the doors are open, everything's fine." One year, we should just not use free cash and let's see what happens. I like the idea of putting together a budget and go for the override, go for broke. I mean, I got calls when we had the, that minor override we had for the schools, people were calling me. I didn't put the budget together, but I happened to be the chairman, okay? But they were upset about that and we were getting 64 cents on the dollar. And they still were upset. So the point is, the only way they're going to realize it is, like I said, when you turn the lights on or when you dial line 1-1, you get Hattelboro. We've done that before, okay? But you know, that's a crude way of doing it, but unless we sit down and come up with what's realistic, the message is not going to get there.
Well, because what may happen is that someday there won't be free cash and we'll be forced to do that without wanting to and without a safety net. And then you'll get Hattelboro whether you want to or not.
I think it'll be interesting to see too, what, what Bill was saying. If, if, you know, the town manager asked all of the departments, including school committee, to put forward what they need to be a functioning, not just level service, what parking wreck make it full-time, all the other departments in town that are not full-time or don't have enough people. Ask, ask this year, to ask your departments to do that. Then we'll get a number for how far we really are behind. And then take away free cash on top of that.
Well, there is a number.
And see where we're at.
Departments put in numbers. If you look at budget sheets, you'll see what the department asks for and what we finally reconcile based on the fact of how many dollars we had.
Right, but sometimes isn't that just, if Mike says, "Give me a level service budget" though, then that's, that's not, they may not be what they really need to kind of roll to back where they were before a major cuts. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely right.
Yeah. But let's get a realistic look at the town from every department, including the schools, of what, what do we really need?
I guarantee you, there's no department in this town that's correctly funded.
No, but I think you, I think you gave us a budget that seemed to be realistic as far as you were concerned.
Right.
Okay? And then when we put it all together, we said, "Whoops, you know, it's the same situation." But you're right. We get a budget from you that's realistic. Now, we, the town gets your number, okay, it's realistic. And then by the time we get done exercising it and balancing it back and forth, it comes out to be something that you didn't even recognize when we give it back to you. But the bottom line is that if we just took those numbers, see what the delta would be. Bonn?
I just wanted to say that I.
I didn't see you.
I'm sorry. I'm reading Tom. The whole time. I just wanted to say that I wholeheartedly agree that the talk of an override campaign needs to come from the leadership at this table. I've been on this committee for a year and a half and two years and three years ago, I helped co-chair the committees that were grassroots to campaign for an override. And I did have a video like what I watched of three members of the town departments on Norton Cable campaigning for what they believed was necessary for the new buildings for Town Hall and Senior Center, the way that this project has had that. And it really would have been helpful to those of us who were trying to explain to the townspeople why this was necessary if the town leadership had taken on that burden as well. We had a month to do it and we had only our own wits to do it. We had no money, we had nothing. So we really needed more resources in the form of town leadership to take that on. And the reason that I took on this position is that I wanted to be sitting at this table with all of you to be able to make that impact. And I think that there are a lot of people in town who agree with the fact that this needs to happen and look to us to make that decision, that that is a position we're going to take and be really thoughtful about all of the departments in town and what they would look like if that were to take place.
I just want to say, you folks are going to continue your meeting.
Anybody who wants to stay is willing to go.
I'd just like to recommend it and maybe your boards can talk about it, but I think it would be helpful if, I know we have done this in the last year, we did this quarterly, we had joint meetings. But I think maybe having all of us here quarterly and then we can set up an ad hoc if people wanted, two from each department, or I don't know how many from FinCom, but if we want to set up an ad hoc to continue meeting like we did with former Florida Sock of Members, I think we should do that. But I just think it's a good idea to maybe go about doing this with everybody on a quarterly
We'll clean up the site so if you have folks coming up, they can see.
Oh, do we need to?
Yeah, you need to.
Before we, before we do adjourn, I just want to say quickly, Paul, is this your official last meeting?
It is.
It is?
Ah, yes.
Well, I think, I think we do want to, as a, as a full school, school committee, we'd love to just recognize all the work we put in. And I, I got to tell you guys, for, for, I've said this for a number of years, some years back, Paul and I were served together, back with Lee Tarantino on the Charter Review Commission. And I tell people to this day, it was a year and change of hell and I loved every minute of it. It was a phenomenal learning experience for me because I'll never forget this. I sat there and Paul sat here and then Lee sat next to him. And there were things that came up and they would argue about them. And I would think, my God, these guys don't like each other. And the second that that thing was over, they would turn to each other and just start talking normally. And I said, "You know, this is how it should work. Things should be a debate, but it shouldn't be a personal debate." And I got to tell you, that was one of the best times of my life in town government. I absolutely loved it. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you've done. It's been a pleasure.
Wow. I can only say that when I wrote my letter to Bill saying he had, he had asked me if I would take another three-year term and I. And I wrote him saying that I thought it was not a good idea. I went back and looked at how long I've been on the committee. And I have been on this committee 46 years and Parks and Recreation, three years, and I chaired the FinCom nine times. And I've been on a lot of other committees, going back to the extended Year-Round School Committee and.
You were an 18-year-old fresh-faced youngster, Bill, and built your name in South Dakota back in '75.
And Town Government Study Committee back with, with Bill and others and several others of the, you know, special one-time shock-type committees. I've enjoyed it. I, you, when you get involved, as most of you know, you get involved in, in these sort of town government things. You're in your last two or three years and then you, you've done it and you leave or you get hooked. And then.
You wind up.
Saying forever. I was appointed to the committee by Joe Yell, who was moderator back in 1970. So aside from three years, I have been on this committee since 1970.
Wow. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll tell you who's born. I see a lot of town officials. Paul Holmreich is the finest public official I have ever met in my life, far enough. And I am proud to have served with him, I'm proud to have appointed him. I, I will tell you, his absence is a huge toll on, on the finance committee. And I know he's not going anywhere and I can still reach him and pull him, I know where he lives, so I can pull him out of his house. But there, there is no one whose service to the town of Norton in terms of importance and integrity and character has been greater than Paul Holmreich. I can tell you that from, from 45 years of my service, I can tell you that his 50 years topped that and then some. So I just want to publicly thank him for being the heart and soul of this committee for so long. Here he is.
Is that Ben Hall?
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We didn't ask you.
One second. We're going to do this. If it doesn't say, well, I think it's. So it's not a training to care. Do you make a motion to adjourn your last?
Motion to adjourn?
Can you hear them? Get out of this.
Word, word, word. I am. I'm waiting.
Today's Monday.
You're the host? I don't know. We don't mind. Let's wait here for a minute.
It's hard to see, you know, we haven't tried to find people saying, "Just grab all his nights home." And here, right here, right here, for another night. We have this long bell. We've got a long call and you know what I'm saying?
I say, I'm a lot concerned that you may be coming.
Michelle's moving on stage. The guys are saying, and once, and once we work with the boss, we didn't have to be there. There's a great one.
I'm singing. I'm right here. I'm right here. We're used to getting. Real mixed up at the same time.
I have a big bag of groceries, that's just my, I'll see behind it. We can just play. I want to do it on, so. That must be nice. It's a good girl. It's a good girl. Why, why can't we do it? Yeah, nice shopping. Yeah, quality.
Eleven years. It's been a while, you might remember.
Yeah, this is.
I'll be keeping you reacting. I've seen it. I've seen it. I've seen it.
I think I'm, they said it was a good mistake. I'm just saying.
I got to read it.
I think I'm, they said it was a good mistake. I'm just saying.
I need you. Start with.
I was happy to.
I need you. Yeah, I got to. All of it, but it's.
I wish, I'm just going to stay.
I'll be in everything you gave me, like the 10th.
Okay. So thank you. We're just in the occasion.
I know.
Yes.
He might.
I don't know.
Wow. Yes, it is. Mike, check the seat. Mike, Mike, Matt, check the seat.
I know. 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 Unless you recess or... Yeah, we're waiting for these guys. They're around. Waiting for you. We'll be there. It seems like they're around. Yeah, all the people that still have business, they're coming. I want to meet. I can't see out. Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I try. I mean, we have this... I mean, we have this... Or do you have to teach them? They're here for you. I have two of them. It's like a really non-nutritious recommendation.
Continue the Board of Selectment meeting. We're gonna go to licenses and permits. The first license application is for Swamp Duck Donkeys LLC for mobile food truck license utilized at 113 Mansfield Avenue, Northern Mass. This, for people who manage, is the ice cream stand wagon. It was originally located there several years ago. It moved to downtown Pizza on West Main Street for a couple of years and it's still there back at the lot next to the Chinese restaurant.
Gentlemen, guard it.
And unless anyone has a question, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the license, the convicture license for Swamp Donkeys LLC for utilization at 113 Mansfield Avenue, Norton, with the stipulation that it's signed off by all the inspectors. I know the fire inspector is already indicated it could be N.A., there's no doubt. It's just an ice cream stand. But to be conditional on all signatures, why?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't realize that. You want to also tell us what you're gonna do or you're gonna free advertise it?
Go for it. Sit right over there. I should just call over here.
I didn't think of denying that.
No problem.
I saw it move, I wasn't sure who was rolling it or what was going in.
Yeah, it would be the farmers running it. It was actually Division of Gens, but she was tired of seeing the look at downtown and it wasn't doing anything and they were done with it. So, after some negotiations, everybody wanted to see it back, we figured we'd give it a shot.
Excellent.
It's gonna be ice cream, cotton candy, that kind of stuff.
Do you plan, I know to many the problem when it was in that segment before was the lack of regular hours. Have you planned, do you have any idea on a schedule?
Yeah, we've been planning seven days a week. We'd like to do noon time, full time, yeah.
Okay. Because personally, that was always the problem was, because I have had my grandchildren and I never knew when I could take the night.
Yeah, we'll get kids out for baseball games or people coming out from Jasmine Garden come over and want some dessert.
Yes. Any questions for the comments?
I'm excited to see them.
But I hope you do have some. If I know, I'll send an email to Bob Kimball because he was always the one who eats more ice cream than I do.
Him and Lee Tarantino, yeah.
So, I'll make sure he gets down there to definitely pay your first month.
Right.
Thank you.
When do you guys think you're opening? Open for Father's Day weekend. Excellent. I love the shirts too.
I love the shirt! And it's looking enough far where I live. Yep.
Peter will be open.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. The next three applications are for special events parking permits. They're all on Mansfield Avenue. And some of the documents you have are from local earth pictures. Because I know when I was reading the applications, I was trying to locate them in my mind, so I had to print this out just so you can get a better sight. One, the 253 is an existing building with an existing asphalt parking lot. The other two are on house lots that in the past, and I'm quite sure, were parking lots. But this is the first year where we have the bylaw for the parking lots, so that the town can regulate how many cars are on, how close they are allowed to get to buildings for buyer safety and other such things. So, that being said, the first application for special events parking permit by John Kamara utilized at 260 Mansfield Avenue, Northern Mass. That's from May 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2019. Do you have any questions or concerns on that?
I just have a question. This is a, is this a residential property?
Yes, it is.
And so, I guess I'm just wondering about the, I don't want to say the authority on this, but how is it determined that there's a space, a rectangle, nine feet by nineteen feet per car?
That, it has to be signed off by the fire department, police department, and the inspector of buildings. And they have gone to each one of these three sites.
So, they're literally marked out? Parking spaces are marked out?
Somehow they're supposed to be marked out, yes. It says right in the bylaw that...
Spaces must be clearly marked on the property.
Exactly. I know it's somewhere, yes. On the floor.
Okay. So, it doesn't have to be, that almost looks like grass, right? Based on the...
It's grass and dirt, the two residential properties and, like I said, the commercial properties, asphalt parking lot with line area.
Okay. The other one that we did, obviously, was the commercial property, so it was pretty easy then.
Yeah, 253 meant to be later, that's a side of, you're out of hurdles.
Yeah. The only concern I have, but it's not really under our purview, the authority, I believe, is the fact that 253 Mansfield Avenue was across the street. And I would think it might be hazardous for crossing. And being as old as I am, I think the last time I went to the Infinity Center was the great woods. And I had no problem getting out of the parking lot. So, I can't imagine walking all that way when I just walked to my car and it drove away. But evidently, things have changed. And like I said, like I said, these residential properties have been operating parking lots in the past.
Right.
Almost like the...
I mean, we've just put restriction or guidance, right? To make sure that it's safe. So, I imagine...
It wasn't to enforce the restrictions.
Yes. So, I imagine if there's some process with all these licenses, if when there's an event for the police department or the fire departments will...
Get down and make spot checks.
That's the fire department is the one, the obligation for 260 has a notice of violation from last year.
Correct. So, they...
That's the one that we're talking about right now?
Yes. Yeah, they do, they do get down and they do check it.
And I saw a police car checking the tail at 250 Mansfield Ave during tonight's concert.
But the problem we've had in the past is we didn't have bylaw, so we didn't really have any teeth to...
Many authorities.
Yep. I know the bylaw was recently adopted, so those are the common offenses.
How did we get this so late? Is it a complaint? And I know the permit starts May 1st?
I think it circulated, part of it was circulating through the inspections.
Okay, so it hits us and it's not, what you're done, it has to go through all these other departments?
Exactly.
This is when the bylaw...
I see, yeah. Okay.
So, a couple, like the 260, even though it was applied for, oh, in April, it wasn't inspected until mid-May.
So, are folks able to use the lots while the application made its way through or they, how does that work?
To be very honest, I'd be lying if I told you I knew for sure.
Okay.
I think possibly if it's pending, they might have, you know, looked the other way. But I, again, like I said, if I told you I knew for sure, I'd be lying. And I don't want to do that, intentionally. I appreciate that. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we accept the application for special events parking by, made by John Kamara to be utilized at 260 Mansfield Ave from May 1 through September 30, 2019.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair, maintain motion to approve the application for special events parking permit by, I'm not sure I have to take it, Sito Brothers LLC to utilize at 253 Mansfield Ave from June 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the application for a special permit, parking permit by Larry Zedden, Ennis, to utilize at 254 Mansfield Ave, from May 30th, 2019 to October 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Can I just look at this one for a sec?
This one here is one house down from the entrance to the Mobile Estates. And just historically, the Ennis family originally owned the entire Mobile Estates. So, one benefit is that it's back lot because emergency ingress through the Mobile Estates.
Thank you. I just want to take a look at the plan.
No problem. That being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Does anyone have any announcements?
I have nothing.
We'll move on to appointments and resignations. We have a request to reappoint Doris Freeman to the Board of Registrates as Republican Representative. She's held that post as long as I can.
Yep.
Chair, maintain motion to reappoint Doris Freeman to the Board of Registrates as Republican Representative.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Okay. Under new business, we have to vote to designate a member of the Board of Selectmen to approve all warrants. And as vice chairman, current chairman, I was the alternate, so I've been doing this since the election. And this would be, I have, in the past, I've only done this for a couple of years, only because, especially during the summer months, if we don't do it this way, we need a minimum of three selectmen to get to the Town Hall. And sometimes in situations, we can have a problem with that. So, this way here, we can just have one perfect sign. It's a relatively new regulation allowed by the state, so just to minimize.
This is what we voted on in the minutes in terms of the accounts payable and the payroll points.
So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that the Norton Board of Selectmen designate Bramwell to approve all warrants and report approvals to the Board at the next meeting following such approval. If for any reason the designee is unavailable to perform this function, they will immediately notify the Town Manager or Town Accountant of their unavailability.
Yeah. And I would like this appointment or approval to be effective May 31st, 2019, only because I've already signed the dispute warrant and just so there's no confusion about which...
I amend my motion to May 31st, 2019 effective.
Okay. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And in the past, we've had the chairman and the vice chairman, so I've already checked with Mike, who would be available in my absence. So, Chair, maintain motion to move with the Norton Board of Selectmen designate Michael Flaherty as the alternate for approval of all warrants. When the designee is unavailable to fulfill this function, as understood, the alternate will only act when notified by the Town Manager or Town Accountant that the rule of designee is unavailable and that will be effective May 31st, 2019. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And in the past, we've had the chairman and the vice chairman's illnesses. And I've already checked with Mike, who would be available in my absence. So I, Chairman, take a motion to move with the Norton Board of Selectment designate Michael Flaherty as the alternate for approval of all warrants when the design needs unavailable to fulfill this function. As understood, the alternate will only act when notified by the town manager or town accountant that the original design need is unavailable. And that would be effective May 31, 2019. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is a review and a vote to sign the warrant for a special town meeting to be held June 18, 2019. This is just to vote the wording of the warrant, not that you support or disagree with it. And I'm voting for or against it, but just that the ballot question reads appropriately.
I don't see any changes from all the previous review.
Yeah, they were trying to make it. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we vote to sign the warrant for the special town election to be held on June 18, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I started signing like I signed my documents.
I think this was in our signature files.
Oh, was it?
I think so.
Okay. Also in your packets, we have a request to award the surge contract for fiscal year 2020, water and sewer treatment chemicals. As you can see, with three chemicals left to bid, on the bid sheet, they indicated what they paid last year. They are, both the liquid potassium hydroxide, a gallon or bulk delivery, has increased approximately 20 cents a gallon. And the potassium permanganate per pound is up approximately four cents.
Up or down?
It's going up.
Oh, I see. I see.
Yeah.
And the third item, they received three bids for sodium hypochlorite, 15% solution, a tank truck delivery, and all bids were rejected. So there would be no awarding of that one item. So Chairman, take a motion to award the bids for the liquid potassium hydroxide gallons bulk delivery, Gordon and Remington Company, Borreva, Mass., for $3.10, 10.33 cents per gallon. And the potassium permanganate pounds, Camry Corporation, Buick, Georgia, for $1.625 per pound.
So moved. Would you use your pharmacist background to pronounce it?
Yeah, I was gonna give you kudos on that myself.
I can't pronounce names, but I'm all over the chemical.
I'm just gonna change my last name.
Oh, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're discussing the town hall community center. It's on here. I don't know if you have anything else you wish to.
So just briefly with the, I mean, obviously, the purpose of the item on the agenda, the whole was, it was on our last agenda and it didn't make it there. But the purpose was for us as a board to collectively talk about the project so that, you know, we just had an opportunity to discuss it because we hadn't been able to do so prior to that tonight. The one thing I want to note, why I don't think that we need to have that discussion, you know, certainly, what are we talking about? I mean, and maybe we did, I mean, I guess I can ask if anybody does want to share their opinions on the previous project or at this point, it's, you know, we kind of talk more about what are next steps. I know I have a couple of things that, from the information that we got from the 24th, that I think that, you know, collectively, we'll need to have some discussion on.
Personally, I would look forward to our next meeting when we'll actually have representatives from the, was it SES?
Yeah, the C. And I think for details, I agree with that. I think, you know, one of my concerns, and I mentioned it earlier, is we have, we have this application form that we submitted April 24th. And in it are a couple of items, you know, including the estimate also, you know, it makes mention in here that town meeting has also voted on funding for the design and construction of the project. So I don't think these statements are accurate. So I think it's just something that, you know, I'll mention it now and then ask the board to go back and review the information and.
Yeah. I think the, to have an intelligent conversation upon it, we need, we need at least Mike Lawrence here to answer questions. And I look forward to having the engineer here.
That, I agree.
To, because I can, I can pronounce the chemical names, but I don't know what that means if we find it with the soil.
Right.
But, so I, I.
No, I'm fine with that. You know, I just wanted to mention that, you know, if we want to talk about still opinions at this point, you know, with the initial agenda item was for, I think we certainly can. But, you know, there are some things in this new information that we'll need to talk about.
Yeah.
I just don't want to lose sight of that. So my request is that, you know, it's a lot of documentation. I mean, I told you, I didn't get through it all.
I did not.
And I'm not sure if we will, you know, in the next two weeks.
Right.
But would ask, you know, everybody to take note of that and just so we have more information going into this meeting with Phil.
Right. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to lighten up a box of the chemicals that I don't understand.
Right.
Which is a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. And I mean, you know, regardless of the project overall, this is our issue. So.
Yep.
The more informed we can be and the more informed we can ensure the public is, I think it'll help for us to figure out how are we going to deal with this and what's the timeline.
Right.
Right. I mean, and then the other thing, regardless of whether a town hall, a community center, or whatever we're calling it, goes on that site, we're gonna have to get that site.
Right.
Remediate it till it's done, not, you know, we were always told it was going to go till it was completely clean and we could occupy it. Apparently that has changed.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
You sure can.
So when you got, when people are always saying, we were told this was going to be handed over to us completely clean, who said, who said that?
That was the understanding.
Like, where did that come from? I'm just so curious, only because I just made a phone call to DEP myself and they just told me straight up that it wouldn't be. So I'm wondering who.
That was the, that, I can't.
Come from somewhere.
It was, it was always, first of all, it was dumped upon the town anyways by the bankruptcy of the free block.
Right. Right.
But it was, it was told in many conversations, I was told, that it was going to dump the town pretty clean.
Yeah. I wonder where that came from. I'm saying, I spent so much time going through all the documents on the town website.
Yep.
Going back and forth because I know not just myself, but a lot of people were questioning, what if we find more stuff under here?
Right.
And there was nothing in any of the documents that, one would say dumped by the town, another one said to be completed by other persons or something like that. And it was like they were going back and forth with each other, but not actually stating anything. So I just set up and it was called DEP.
The way.
And so I don't understand how somebody ever had the idea that it was going to be clean because after the bankruptcy, he explained to me that there was an escrow account of $300,000 to, that they could use.
Yep.
For not asbestos on the inside, I believe, something to that effect.
I agree.
And they spent half of it in cooperation with the EPA, and they're gonna be using the rest of it for the oil remediation, taking down part of the structure.
Yep.
And he said, we use every penny we can, but once that money gone, they are done, and then the town applies for the brownfield.
And it's, unfortunately, when you're dealing with the state and federal governments, you're dealing with.
A lot of people.
It depends what's in the ground, who's got a couple of the cleanup work. And it's always been the position that we weren't going to accept it unless it's clean.
Right.
And I know, I can only.
Did Norton say that to them?
Yes.
Like, they don't want this unless it's clean, so I don't know why they would have come back and said, well, we're only spending $300,000. This is gonna be way more than that.
And I can only tell you, I'm not an expert at it, but I'm just.
I'm not either.
I'm just gonna tell you, my understanding is from speaking with the town manager, who he also said that he would defer to the engineer to explain it more thoroughly, but.
Is that too easy?
Yes. They, each thing that they find goes in, is a different funding source. So they can't commit to paying to clean the site completely until, until the fight improves themselves, basically. I know going with the Schback property, after EPA and DEP were in there, at one point, we exhausted all the grant money, I believe, we exhausted all the grant money that could be utilized for an abandoned site. And in that case, to get the final cleanup money out of the super fund, I believe, that is the property. And that may be eligible to be.
To get that.
But that's my historical memory.
Yeah. Well, I think that's the case with the brownfield stuff too, right?
Possibly, but I, that's what I mean, I don't want to tell you, like, no.
I just think it was just very frustrating for a lot of people.
Oh, right.
And I can't speak for myself. But in, I watched so many meetings to trying to catch up on all of this, watching and seeing people say, well, what's it gonna be, the condition under the building, whatever. And all anybody ever said was, we're getting it clean. Of course we're getting it clean. Common sense would say it's gonna be clean. And then I finally just called and he said, well, no. So I don't know where the disconnect was between them and us.
Well, I know, DEP, as far as I know, is strictly on the asbestos.
No, they're not doing it.
I think the exterior asbestos.
The outside. They can't put it inside. Right. Because they can do the shingles because it's flammable or whatever, and it would be decent to the environment. So they can do that, but only up to the amount that they have in that escrow account.
And that's why we have to go, you have to exhaust all the funds in one grant before you go for another grant. And I think probably because of that, again, I'm just guessing from historical memory, the fact that we have to exhaust all the funds from one place before we can get a track day grant to do some more remediation with another problem. And that, I think, is what's drawing out the timetable. If everybody would come to the table and just say, okay, all these things are here.
I could have prevented it though. I mean, I would have been, because my first heartbreak was, I was like, yes, finally.
Yeah.
And then once I started trying to look at it, I said, what is going on? This is just a sense. And they're asking us to approve so much money.
Right.
How can we do, or how can I do that?
Yeah.
Not knowing.
I think maybe it was wishful thinking.
Yeah.
But it was our understanding from the beginning that it was going to be just given to us and for a dollar.
Yeah.
It was presented.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask.
It doesn't need to ask. I wish I.
I appreciate it, it's so late.
I wish I had an answer. Definitely.
And I hope something is done with the property because Elliot Jacobs, he made it very clear that it is a hazard that the building is even standing.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, I agree with you all. It is a hazard and it, the EPA needs to try to, to do its best to clean it up so we can have a new town hall and community center.
Yeah. In the middle of that, I mean, I know fire problems extremely concern because if it's not cleaned and it burns, that just compounds the problem.
Well, right, right. Or even some kids playing and getting in there, but.
And they say they have.
He said there's evidence of people going in there.
Exactly.
So that's pretty scary. Yeah.
So we're going to do the best we can, but I don't know how we're gonna get it.
I know.
We'll get there.
I know. I just wish it had been much more straightforward from the get-go. This is the plan. Not, of course it will be clean.
I don't think, I don't think that that's how any of these chemical sites, sounds good. They didn't even develop.
Well, it's not, I don't know. I just feel like it's kind of the, kind of the atmosphere I feel with everything that goes on, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, I mean, I think that this will, you know, we'll have more information as we gather discussion with.
And maybe it's here now with this.
Thing, you know, when things came through. Well, it does matter, right? It matters, one, about transparency. It matters about, you know, if we knew this and there was a cost to the town and we weren't there on that, I mean.
Well, like I said, I called when I very first started looking, you know, just getting interested in it. I wish I'd called then, because then I would have gone to town hall then. I dropped like questions off on Friday, you know, it's still last minute, but.
Can I, can I ask who you spoke with at the DEP?
His name is Elliot Jacobs. He's the project manager.
Okay.
His name is on.
I was gonna say.
And he was very straightforward, like, very informational, and called me right back. I called him afternoon, he called me back the next day.
I was speaking with Mr. Yunets yesterday. He left around time yesterday, sort of the same morning. And he had contacted State Weps for additional funding for cleaning. And I'm not gonna remember her name. She was at the ribbon cutting for the sewerage plan.
I don't remember her name.
She was a district.
She, I saw it. She was to my left, yeah.
Anyways, I'll get her name because you know I'm not good with names.
Right.
So I don't mean to belabor the point, Chairman, but hearing now that there's additional grants being awarded, that's not what we were told. So to kind of the point that's kind of being danced around, the information that we received from whomever doesn't seem to be lining up with what's happened. So from my standpoint, I'm very frustrated with that.
I don't think you're unique of having that frustration.
Elliot Jacobs said that he made it clear back in April in his initial meeting, or not, maybe it wasn't him, his boss or whatever, that after the $300,000 escrow, and they were done, and he also said they met just past April, I guess.
Yeah.
I think for 2018, you mean?
That was there first.
Okay.
I believe that first.
I haven't, I haven't got that to go to report yet.
He said last April, and then again this April. They had big meetings, he said probably about maybe 20 people present.
And I'm pretty sure that they, everything they do was.
So they must be talking code or something, not understanding each other.
I don't see it being.
Yeah. He said that the town has to do all that, the additional asbestos, before the building can come down.
I hope you can make it to the next meeting when we have the CEC representative there in the meeting.
To have him there?
Yeah. I mean, I hope that you can make it.
Me?
Yes.
Who is that?
June 13.
June 13.
June 13.
I can try.
I promise, well, I can't promise.
Well, I didn't want to bring this up earlier because I feel like it's almost, I didn't want it to create like, I was, I felt bad for them, and I thought like, I don't know.
But we need to understand the process. We need to understand how to fix it and make sure.
Well, somewhere something about loss of isolation is what I think. So I just felt like that should be, because all I did was take a phone call.
Right.
And I got the information. And maybe, maybe I got misinformation, but he's the project.
The information you received lines up with what I've been told from others in the field.
Yes.
In terms of generalities.
And I do, I do know the person that I've talked to, and he works for DEP too, and he actually called me and said, oh, did you call? Has he mentioned to me? So he also had gotten in touch with them. They asked him, and he did, so.
I think my, my understanding of the timeline is DEP first came out on site sometime in 2016, related to the sheen of water that triggered the EPA when it came out. There's a whole list of pollution reports that are available on the link that Renia San Dulcia posted online, and it details the funding. So I think they allocated $1.9 million to deal with the oil saturation of soil and of water. And the last one I can see is they expended 1.3 of it.
And the money remaining in the DEP account, what he told me is to take down the building above those oil tanks. Safe and, and so that they can get to the tanks, and he said, and then that money is gone. And whatever's left is on us, we take it.
Do we have confirmation that the stack is down? It says it's complete in the report.
I think he said it was when I talked to him.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
It's Robin.
Hello.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I said that. Robin Monti.
Thank you, Robin.
Robin O.
Glad you asked.
So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being diligent and bringing the questions and, you know, while I'm trying to figure out information and see reserve funds.
And I hope something, I hope the town can do something with that site. It's so beautiful.
Without that building, it would be.
I know. I know. Somehow, some way.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for it. I also wanted to say and just kind of see how it all works, because I haven't stayed through a whole selectmen's meeting before.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna make it through this one.
He's a bro like me.
I was at the permanent building committee meeting tonight at 6 prior to this meeting, and they mentioned something about a June 5th or June 6th meeting between you all as a representative from CEC. I perhaps misunderstood them, but I just wanted to throw that out there to you guys that if you wanted to communicate with the PBC to find out if they had scheduled a meeting that they were expecting you to present, that you do about that.
Yeah, no, because the meeting we have on the 13th.
13.
Right. We have the engineers coming.
So a different date was thrown out. So we, yeah, we can circle back and make sure I.
I think, I'm surprised, only because of the fit has already been blocked out just in case town meeting.
Yes. Yeah, I mentioned Nemo on that one.
In case, in case town meeting was to occur and go over two nights, so I thought the fit had already been blocked out for that.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, from all his communications on the agendas, it's the 13th, is that?
Yeah.
You're of the same mindset? So we can just, we'll make sure that everybody knows the date. And potentially, we may want to think about meeting in a bigger venue, in the selectmen's meeting room?
It's spacious. We'll put a couple of extra chairs out.
Spacious and hot.
Well, the only, the only problem I had, we have, is finding a venue that we can televise live from. Should I, I'll, I'll check into it though. Because if we can televise live, our viewing audience is very upset with us. So. If I don't make a note of it, I won't remember. I have no business, I don't think I have a town manager report. I think he's having a good time at his manager's meeting. Selectmen's report mailed? Do you have anything?
I just wanted to thank Paul Helmer for his nearly half a century of service to the town. I know we went through that all tonight, but I thought we merited being on our meeting minutes.
Yeah, I know you served with him on Friday.
Been there for 11 years now.
And I served on, on, with him on the High School of Revelation.
I was on that too. I was on that vote.
Seemed like what he is.
And everything was imperfect.
Yes. But no, he's a fine gentleman. He's, he knows the history of everything in his, his memory. I'm jealous because.
I was a lot of, I didn't talk.
But I can't compartmentalize it. and put it in chronological order and...
Recall.
And now that, now that I actually have the confidence to say, this is the way it was. But yeah, no, he's done an outstanding job. Okay.
I have a couple of items if you're down.
Yep, no problem.
So I just wanted to mention, this came through email, I think that we all received it, from Sandy Overhead, who we recently appointed as the superintendent representative.
Yep.
And she was able to attend the annual meeting that they had. And just wanted to mention, if you haven't seen it for others, that Jennifer Carlinow was honored with a special individual recognition award for her work. And Sandy indicated that the award honors a person, the area business or community organization for specific contribution to support the region or the build-up planning or economic development. So I thought that was fantastic that she got that award. You know, I'm sure it might ordinate you, we should have some information, but since he's not, I thought that I would bring it up as an item.
I did see that, but I didn't make a copy of it, so I thank you for mentioning it.
Yeah, I had to print it, so I didn't, I didn't forget about it. The other thing too is, at our last meeting, we had conversations with Lou Grant, who's from the Water Department, and I asked him if he could follow up with the DEP about a timeframe for the treatment. And so he did get back to me via email, and he said that the required, the overall requirements, assuming that there are no huge equipment problems, will take between three and four months for that process. So I think he anticipated it would begin in October, so probably Q1 for the treatment plan to be fully live and operational. I did want to share that, and certainly, I hope that we have them, you know, maybe we can, it's quite a ways away, maybe we can plan every other month to have him or a member from the commission to come and talk and just give us the status of the project.
Okay, I'll, I'll see if we, we haven't been successful in the past getting them to be able to help, but usually they don't, the superintendent doesn't count, right?
Sure.
And I was very impressed with Frank's abilities to explain this.
Oh, yeah, I, as long as somebody with knowledge can, can talk to us about, you know, the status and if we see any hurdles to the timeline. You know, I think that this, the water treatment specifically, and I think most would agree, I think that's our number one priority in the town, is to drink new water and making sure that's better for the residents. I imagine that we'll have some other Frank ones jumping up there too. That was all I had.
Okay.
I just wanted to recognize Chief Plaques, first responders, for their actions in saving the life of the national grid linesman two weeks ago now. We received an update that he was doing well, surprisingly well, for what he went through. And that can largely be attributed to the quality of response that the officer on site gave approximately of additional resources.
Jimmy Cameron.
You take for granted what these guys, you know, he's out there on cell phones, not doing anything, but this guy wouldn't be here if the officer hadn't been there. He didn't know what to do. It's a credit to our community, the professionalism we have on safety. I know I'm personally very proud of, been dependent on several times.
The other item I have, just as was discussed today, there's a lot of talk about these financial planning projections. I know Mike's not here, but does that request come from us as an ask? Or do we say we would like a three-year projection? How, what is the mechanism?
What I will do is, I'll write that, I have a list of six, seven topics that I'm gonna speak with Mike about. I'll add that to my list, back to you. I did mention earlier in conversations, or I think it was you, maybe it was me, I think Renee had mentioned about maybe getting to the budget planning process earlier with him, even with just a couple of members of the subcommittee. And I mentioned that to him in the past, maybe it's probably about a month ago now. And so hopefully in the fall, he stops collecting his wish lists, his bottom hits, we're gonna talk about getting involved in that. So I'll tie that right into maybe a three, five year economic plan, fiscal plan.
And I think we all understand that it's not set in stone, but it helps set the path towards understanding what the potential future looks like. And you can be, you know, very optimistic, very pessimistic, and sort of a little overwrought, right? At least that we have something to start planning towards.
Okay, I'll, like I said, I'll put it on my list, because I wrote it down.
Excellent.
Only, although, I gotta tell you, as we're coming to the warrant articles, I signed, I'll tell you, I signed a warrant article, and I told you that if there were any big items, I make notes of them, so I can tell you. And I made notes on them, but I didn't bring that copy to my board with me, but I'm gonna go by memory. So if there's no other selectmen's report mailed, we'll move on to warrants in minutes. And Chair Lunt standing motion to approve payroll warrant, PR 19-24, due ending May 18th, 2019, warrant dated May 23rd, 2019, in the amount of $1,334,868.50.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair Lunt standing motion to approve invoice warrant, AP 19-47, dated May 23rd, 2019, in the amount of $529,918.49.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair Lunt standing motion to approve invoice warrant, AP 19-48, dated May 30th, 2019, in the amount of $1,596,119.45.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and on this particular invoice warrant, being that large, I checked, extra special, $800,000, $220,000, oh, I know, $800,000 was medical insurance payment. $220,000 was the Southeastern Regional Vocational Charge for the town. And between $15,000 and $60,000 was several school items. It included special education placements and industrial transportation. So they picked up the bulk of that, that warrant article was. With that explanation, have, I already have one for second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that addition, so.
And for recalling it.
I remembered the numbers. I just couldn't remember what the internet was for at first. Okay, next meeting's agenda is, are we plowing up? But we already know about speaking of the downstream property.
We've had the item, I know that somebody from Conservation Commission wasn't able to make it again. Do you agree with that as a potential item?
I know I spoke with Mike, and he was going to, again, approach Jennifer. He did approach Jennifer about this meeting, but it probably wouldn't have been there anyways, but...
Right, I think too, was that brought forth by the Conservation Commission? Because I think maybe, is Scott the chair, the chair?
Yeah, I was.
I think maybe the invitation should go to both of them.
Okay, I think it was, but it seemed to me when I spoke with Mike, he indicated both names. So I think that maybe that might have been one of the problems, I don't know. Maybe both go to town. But... And Tammy, I'll just drop me a line, copy Jen, so it gets done right. And if there's no other business coming to the board, Chair Lunt standing motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.